Thank you, Mr. White. Everyone, if we could just rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the February 27th regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Tonight's meeting is being recorded by WCTV and also Ms. Ruiz is making an audio recording. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please just let the chair know, seeing none. Also want to mention that Ms. Spear won't be joining us tonight. She has a work commitment that came up last minute and she won't be here. First item on the agenda, public participation. Anyone wishing to speak before the committee? Seeing none. Good news. Do we want to do the buddy bench first?
Yeah.
Alright, so yeah, first item on good news is the buddy bench at Minnet Forest. And Ms. DiFilippo had asked to take pictures from behind here and she's perfectly welcome to do that.
Thank you.
It's exciting.
(inaudible)
It's an empty chair.
The buddy bench, the buddy bench, created by students in room D-120 and D-121. What is a buddy bench? A buddy bench is more than a bench or playground. It's a start to friendships or you and your friends place to find people to play with. It can even be a not so secret hideout. The buddy bench is a good place to make a friend.
The buddy, the buddy bench is a place to go when you don't have anything to play or you just need some friends to play a game with you or you need more people for a game like infected or tag.
It is also a place where a new kid would go because maybe they are shy and they don't know how to ask to play. Maybe you can help if you see someone sitting there, you can invite them to play. A buddy bench is a place where you can also find a friend when you need one.
You, you could ask someone, are you feeling okay? Do you want to come over and play with me and my friends? Do you want to play something together? What do you like doing recess?
In answer, we had a new student in Ms. Nash's class and the buddy bench is a great idea for her and others. Our new student moved from another country and when she came to Wareham, she didn't know anybody yet. The buddy bench would be a great, great for her. All new students would have to do is sit down on a bench and boom, someone will come.
(laughing)
The buddy bench, well, this buddy bench wasn't made out of magic. It was made by hard work. Thank you to Philip Dwan for dedicating his time and money to Minnet Forest. Mr. Dwan bought the wood and built the bench for us. Mrs. Nash and Ms. Lasas painted the bench and painted the words on it. Both classes voted on quotes about friendship to remind us why we have the bench and about being kind.
We all put our handprints on the bench to show that we are all a part of it. Our class will teach the rest of the school about the buddy bench soon. Bench dedication ceremony at school. We presented the slides. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. So, who do we have here today?
Did we do this up?
Yes.
Liam Phillips. Alexis Paul Gomes. Malia O'Connor.
Karen Roberts.
Corinne Jones.
(laughing)
Jeez.
Boy, this is, yeah, this is, thank you so much. This is one of my favorite parts of being on the school committee is things like this. And thank you, Ms. Bakayaki, for asking to have it on the agenda. And thank you, everyone, for being able to make it. This was, that was a great presentation. I love it. Anyone have any questions or, Ms. Rossi?
So, you guys said that your two classes voted to bring in the buddy bench. What gave you guys the idea to create such an inclusive thing for your fellow students?
Well, I think Ms. Lasas had heard of it because her, um, her kids had one at her school. So, I think she wanted to have one for the school too. That's what I think.
Ms. Bakayaki?
I don't really have a question. I just want to say thanks for coming tonight. Yes, the slideshow was great. I was not expecting that. We're really lucky to have kids who model kindness at Minnet Forest like you guys. So, thanks for coming tonight to share that. And thanks to the families for bringing the kids tonight to share that with us.
Yeah, and, oh, Ms. Birch?
Have any of you guys used the buddy bench yet?
No. No. Tomorrow, we're gonna do a presentation to the whole school and the whole school is gonna do their handprints and I think, um, yeah, it's not out yet for anybody to use. We're still gonna put it up.
I'm sure you guys are excited, huh?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Who did the slides? Can we tell that the school committee who made the slides?
Some of us.
I traded the slides.
Oh, um, a whole group, me and, uh, Mikoi and a bunch of other kids.
No, it was all through the left.
Yeah.
That's great. What grade? What grade is this? Fourth grade?
Fourth.
Okay, Ms. Rossi?
So, once you guys do your dedication, where is the bench gonna go in the school?
Um, it's gonna go on the field.
In the field.
Oh, in the field.
So, people can sit on it if they don't have anybody to play with.
Very cool. You guys did a great job.
Yeah, you really did. And thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Wow. (applause)
I just wait till they head up. I feel like my chair is really long. Oh, there we go. I was like super low to the ground. Yep. They were so.
Ms. Rossi?
So, on Saturday, the Viking Theater Company from Wareham High School is participating in the Massachusetts Drama Festival. It's going to be held at 14 different high schools across the state and there are 104 drama departments that are participating. We're participating at Bourne High School. The top three schools and departments, it's a, it's a competition put on by the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild. There'll be three judges from the guild at each location and at the end of the day, there's probably, you know, depending anywhere from six to, I think, eight schools per location, depending on the size. So, again, ours is at Bourne and the top three will then move on to the semifinals. And if, from the semifinals, they move on to the finals, which becomes a three-day festival in Boston, which would be a really huge opportunity for our kids. The Wareham's drama department is doing a play called Almost Maine and they go on at nine o'clock at Bourne High School on Saturday morning. It is open to the public, so anyone can go and support the Vikings and it's $15 to get in. And that goes towards, you know, kind of helping everything get set up for the rest of the festival. So, I think it's a really great opportunity that our kids are involved in such a cool project. My son is the set designer, so I'm a little extra proud. So, hopefully we'll get some people, now that it's nice and local, that they can go out and check it out.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. I was at one of the plays and they had mentioned that and I had missed it. I'm like, oh, I wish I knew that. So, so I'm glad you mentioned that. I'm gonna really try and make that. Anyone else with good news? Oh, did you hear about?
Minnet Forest received a thank you note from Sergeant Elaine Tierney because the Minnet Forest students and staff collected cards and some gifts to send to soldiers. So, they were just very grateful and hope that all enjoyed their holidays. So, Minnet, thank you very much for that effort.
Awesome. Anyone else with more good news? Ms. Bakayaki?
I just want to say good luck to the DECA students who left today to go compete at their state competition. And I also today saw a true sign of spring, an announcement about kindergarten registration, which is just amazing to me that that time has rolled around again. So, I know how exciting that is for families, so that's coming up.
Yeah, I remember going to my first ice cream social, you know, for the kindergartens and I think it was Ms. Chandler was like, you know, you're looking at the class of, I think it was like 2033 or something. I was like, oh, my God, you know? So, yeah, that is a, a sign of spring. Let's see, so any more good news? Alright, seeing none. Thank you. Report of the student representative.
Hello, everyone. Alright, to start off, the Teens for Jeans effort sponsored by Air Postle is coming to an end tomorrow. There was a pretty big pile of jeans donated. I'm sure it'll make a lot of people happy. It's the small things that can help others around us as well as our environment. Any last-minute donations can still be dropped off tomorrow at the front office of the high school. The Global Education Club celebrated Black History Month by recognizing successful African-Americans such as Martin Luther King, Obama, and Oprah Winfrey over the announcements every morning this week. Also, students are pleasantly surprised getting back from vacation on Monday. The hallway lights are replaced and bright as ever. It sure woke a lot of people up. There was people like looking around, like what changed? And we all finally realized. There's a new ATM machine located in the foyer that is student accessible during the day. That is for the PCT bank. I saw a couple eighth graders looking at it like they've never seen an ATM before. Lastly, we have multiple student volunteers. They'll be at certain precincts next Tuesday for early elections. The great people that work at these polling locations, they're really busy all day. They stay there from morning till night, which is certainly hard work and it's a long day. The volunteers will stay from seven to 9:30 in order to help count votes and assure that numbers are correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, awesome job, as always. Moving on to the minutes of the meeting, February 13th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second it.
Any discussion? Any of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero zero. Class of 2021 requests for senior prom.
Hello.
Hello, welcome and just please state your names.
I'm Grace Bridjolly, class president for the class of 2021.
I'm Brooke Chandler. I'm class secretary for the class of 2021.
I'm Adriana Dillon, vice president of the class of 2021.
Okay.
So, for our class, we want to have our senior prom at the Cape Club where the scene, where this class is having their prom this year in Thelma.
So, the date would be Saturday, May 22nd, 2021, 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. And then the, what's it called? The pre-prom, if you will, your prom, no, thank you, sorry, would be around four.
We were thinking $65 to $70 for ticket costs to offset the, any fees and costs. And we're also thinking of doing any fundraising to help students pay.
Yeah, for fundraising, we're gonna be doing a night at Red Robin to raise money for our class on March 12th. And then, as well as, we're gonna be doing catalogs for students to pay for the cost of their dues as well as prom and then a class trip if we end up going that direction.
Okay. Any questions?
Sounds good.
I got one. So, would it be poor form for a parent to show up and chaperone one of these?
(laughing) I'll answer that.
What do you think? It's alright?
I think it's okay.
Alright, well, I got.
Don't let him intimidate you. Don't, don't give him the answer that.
I mean, I think it depends on the parent.
That's.
I think it depends on the parent and their actions at that prom, but I think it's okay.
Yeah, would it change if it was one of your parents? Would you still look at that?
I think I'd be okay with it.
I can, I can just add something to that. In 1998, I asked my daughter, who's okay, if I was her class advisor at Wareham High School, and she said, of course, Dad, I'll be part of it. And a year after that, she said, I didn't know that meant you would alter the prom so long ago.
Well, you know, Ms. Bakayaki brought up DECA states. I've got tomorrow off. I was thinking I might crash it. We'll see.
I think my child would expect me to try to crash his prom, so I don't think I would. The shock value just wouldn't be worth it anymore. He'd be like, of course you would.
He'd be disappointed if he didn't go. Alright, so you're looking for a vote for us to approve this?
Yes.
Alright, anyone, any more questions or anything?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you for not planning it on Memorial Day weekend or on a Friday. I know that's a, a thought that goes into it every year, so thank you. So, I would move that we approve their request for the prom.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero zero. Have a good time.
Thank you.
Pick a fun theme.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Do they still do themes for proms? I don't know.
Yeah, they're doing themes. This year, they're doing the Boeing 20s because it's 2020.
Oh, see.
It's a fun theme.
We didn't have themes. There was a song that was the theme when I was growing up and that was how they planned it.
Afraid to ask.
Well, have fun. It was Frank Sinatra. It was Frank Sinatra. We were classy bunch at Holbrook High School, so.
Yeah, I guess so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll wait for them. Alright, next item on the agenda, request approval, Wareham High School trip to Canada in June 2021.
Oh, I printed one out. Thank you.
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you. Public, anyone want to?
Welcome.
Again, my name is Elena Mutarkina. I am a teacher at the high school and this year it didn't work out. I did not have enough students who were eager to go and who were able to pay, so I took into consideration the timing that was given to me. We initially started the trip, the advertising for the trip that was going to be this year, but didn't happen in, in October or November, where most of the kids who wanted to go and who were eager to go already signed up for the European trip. So, I hope that if I start advertising and I start doing everything for it right now for the June of next year, it should be good. Plus, I did a survey online for the whole school, not just for the French students, so I know right now what is the money limit that is more or less affordable for half of the school to go. I know when they can go and when I'm not interfering into, with any kind of other trips or any occasions. And we planned it for June. Again, the students voted for that. And now you can see the amended version of everything. All the highlights that they voted for, the most popular ones, I packed them now not into four days, three nights, that used to be, but in three days, two nights. It makes it more affordable and if I have 40 people from the whole school, it is about $600. So, going lower and still the same opportunities for them, not just the French students. And I think the French students are actually more and more motivated because they're right, right now, they're doing pen pal correspondence with real people in France, but it's okay. Next time, I'll find them someone in Quebec and maybe we'll meet over there like I used to do when I worked in Connecticut. I did it several times. It was fun. Let me go through several fundamental things that maybe you want to know about the trip. The first one is that I worked with that company before, so they are very reliable and very swift in changing at last minute whatever happens. It is going to be about 600 per student, up to 750 per student if we get the minimum of 20 students. So, 20 students is 750. About 40 students is already $610 per student. Passport is not required, just birth certificate, but they must be a US citizen. And food is paid for three times a day. It's not just the breakfast at the hotel. No, they have the fancy, typical French breakfast, not the continental at the hotel. The French freshly baked croissant, the hot, big mug of hot chocolate and.
You should have brought some of that tonight.
They have the lunch. Oh, welcome to all the cooking class in Wareham High. When we study the food unit, yes, they bake for themselves. They follow directions exactly in French, no word of English. Our chef can testify on that. And even those who do not really understand something in class sometimes, work for food, they get it all right. They pay attention very, very well. So, three times a day, they get food. Lunch is included as well and lodging, all the tips, night hall monitor, everything is included in there. And insurance, of course. Then, financial aid. I already set up the school account with Kim Kaviki. She helped me out a lot with this. Box tops for education, so everything that our students or parents can already just scan the box tops from their kitchen and this 10 cents goes directly to the school. If they just don't forget to pay attention to it and just click, 10 cents is ours. Then, cooking, whenever, whichever level of French is cooking during their food unit, we can sell it to teachers. I know that bake sale is not allowed during, I just expect it's not allowed during the regular school day, but I know that our chef has a program where students cook and they deliver it to students on Friday. So, we will just like cut.
Teachers.
Yes, to teachers.
Teachers, no students.
No students. Teachers can order it and can pay for it. So, we will just cut him short a little bit for maybe two weeks. It will help. Summer care program, I, I double-checked with Maureen Manning. She says that they expect at least two or three spots for this summer, which, where they need help with kids. And I will be posting and, posting some job positions that I know for local farms and stores that accept people who are 14 years and older for part-time jobs. So, students are aware of this and they really want to find something, I will get them the connections. Individual direct online payment, I don't do the money. I give you all the registration, all the links, where to do it, how to set up the account and your password, and they do it directly with the company. And itinerary is in your printouts, so if you are eager to go through it or you want me to do some highlights, I can do this for you.
Alright, any que, oh, Ms. Rossi?
My, my only question is, I'm looking at what the price includes with the ground transportation Florida and, in Florida, Canada, N's and A, you know, I'm thinking warm. But it doesn't specify, like, is there air, are they flying to Quebec? Are you busing to Quebec? Like, how are they getting to Canada? Because that doesn't seem clear.
They are getting a super fancy bus, like NFL bus.
Yeah, no, this says ground transportation while in, so I wasn't sure if that included two as well. So, that's what I was just double-checking.
There and back. And we stay with the same bus. It's a very, very fancy bus.
Yeah.
That's the only time in my life with all my international travel that I got such a fancy bus. And this bus and the driver always stays with us. They don't change the driver and always picks us up, no surprises. It's always there with us.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bakayaki?
I just have one question. How long is the ride to Quebec from here?
Eight hours, usually seven and a half or eight, depends on the traffic and the driver and how much we wait at the customs control. But, and this is already including, we make one stop at the gas station where while he is filling up the tank, we can fill up on our stomach.
Okay, great. I love that you've made it so affordable for the kids to go.
I'm trying my best because I know very well what some students are going through because right now I teach and I know like the inside stories from them.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to wish, wish you well and that, that you get enough people. And it is, it's tough all around. I mean, the, this year's senior class didn't get to go on their senior class trip to Universal because not enough could, could go, you know? And I guess it happens, you know, so, but good, good for you for keep going and making it even better. Yeah, so do you need a vote? Does she need a vote? Yeah, alright, so.
Emily had a question.
Sorry, go for it.
I'm just, I'm looking at the payment schedule and it says the first payment was due February 15th, 2020.
Uh, payment schedule, we're going to change it because when I was getting ready for this new planning, it was back in December, I think, when we realized that we don't have enough students to go for this trip. So, I started planning for next year.
Oh, so you haven't changed it?
Yes, it's gonna be changed. It is just approximate. Moreover, if you are not ready to make three installments, if you prefer to divide it like say into 10 months, they are fine with this. When you register, I just give you the phone number or you can connect with them by email and you're telling them, well, I'm a working student and I can afford only $100 a month. Can I do it on my online account? They will change your online account and you'll be doing exactly that.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So, with that, entertain a motion to approve the Wareham High School trip to Canada in June 2021.
So moved. Second it.
Any further discussion? Any of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero zero. Thank you, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Onto the vote to approve school calendar for 2020, 2021.
I met with the WEA governing board and some other interested members on February 3rd and we really talked about the start date and the end date. This year, we did a half day to start school and what we found was, it was wonderful for the high school and middle school and Minnet, but for our Deacon's family, it was very difficult because when we have little kids coming in, not knowing their school or their bus, some of them having a hard time remembering where they live and with notes, et cetera. Our clerical staff and administrative staff and teaching staff were working very hard to make sure that we got everyone home on the right bus. And the two hours during the day just really cramped and made it very difficult. So, what we would like to do is to go back to a full day at the beginning of school, the first day of school for our teachers, experienced teachers, would be August 26th and 27th. New staff orientation would be August 18th and 19th. This backs us up to ending school, provided that we have the five snow days are included, it would be on June 24th. So, I would ask the committee to please vote the calendar. One other thing, if you look under the New Year Day, January 1st, it says Thursday. Schools open on January 4th, but January 4th is a Monday. We do not have the MCAS dates yet and as soon as we do, they will be plugged into the calendar. This passed the WEA, the board, it was voted upon, and so this is the calendar that we're moving forward.
Alright, any questions, comments? Ms. Bakayaki?
So, I guess my only question is, it says half day, but it wouldn't be a half day. You're changing that. Okay.
Oh, oh, so, yeah, alright, I thought it was gonna be.
The first day, August 31st is a full day of school, is what you're saying?
Full day of school. Yeah.
Okay, for both, for, yeah, okay. And anything else?
So, then, without any snow days, the last day of school will be June 19th?
Correct.
Okay.
Alright, and do we, we usually have the MCAS dates by now, don't we?
No.
No? Okay, I'm sorry. Alright. And, and so last year when we voted on it, maybe the year before, I was, you know, we had gone back and forth and I said, you know, whatever we do, we should really stick with, you know, they've been going, you know, after Labor Day, before Labor Day. So, this. you know, they've been going, you know, after Labor Day, before Labor Day, so this, this is pretty much like last year, I think, right? Because we're opening on August thirty-first, and this current year we opened August twenty-eighth, and, and we're, and, you know, assuming that no snow days, we'll be closing June twenty-fourth, and, and this, this year we're closing June twenty-second. Yeah, so.
So it's the same week?
The same week, yeah.
It's up, Labor Day is late this year.
Yeah, and everyone's complaining about that, but, I mean, we can't help that, you know.
I, I also would like to point out that on Election Day, November third, it will be a teacher in-service day, and due to the fact that we have voting at Deccus, it's just too congested, and we just needed to make sure that we did not have students in the building, so we're going to an in-service day.
Okay. All right, so, any further questions or comments? Okay, take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second it.
Michelle, so, I mean, is it a motion to approve as amended, but the, yeah, so, I mean, so let's take, can you rescind that?
Yeah, I rescind my original motion, and I now make a motion to accept the amended version of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendar.
Okay.
Second it.
Second, okay, great. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, onto the vote to adopt MGL section forty-seven of chapter seventy-one as amended by chapter sixty-six of the special acts of nineteen ninety-six.
Yes, this would be, the school committee needs to vote to, to adopt this, and this will allow different officials in the schools, principals, people that collect money to be bonded, and this is something that town council has suggested we need to do, and so I'm asking the committee to please vote to approve this.
Ms. Rossi.
So, how many people would be bonded, because this obviously allows people to handle money, so is there, is there a certain qualification that, of who will be able to become bonded, or is it, like, anybody that wants to become bonded will be able to become bonded, like, what, how, what's the protocol going to be for this?
Anyone that would handle money, such as the athletic director, the principal, student activities funds, we have some people bonded now, this just allows us to include the principal and some other folks that would handle the money. If you don't handle the money, if you don't handle money, we would not bond you.
So currently, who is bonded?
Currently, there are some principals that are bonded, there are some people that do student activities bonded, and that, there, I think that's pretty much it, and that's why we need to get a few more people bonded.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Ms. Bakayaki.
Well, I guess, so we're already abiding by, this is mass law, I mean, so we're, we're voting to adopt mass law, I mean, it's law, so we're already abiding by it.
Right, but I need to have the vote in order to be able to bond some people.
Okay.
Ms. Rossi.
So does that mean that the ones that are bonded now didn't need a vote, or was there a previous vote by previous school committee members to get the ones that are currently bonded, previously bonded, or will they have to get rebonded under this MGL section forty-seven to continue their bond?
No.
It's a lot of word bond, I know, but.
No, they will not. One of the reasons why this has come up is when I started looking at who has bonding with collecting money, it was very, there was no rhyme or reason to why people were bonded, and so when I started asking questions, they had the town attorney, Rich Bowen, do some checking, and came up with, this is what we need to do, so we're covered to have everyone who needs to be bonded bonded.
So, will the, do the existing bonds, is there expiration dates on those bonds, or once they're bonded with the school, are they bonded indefinitely during their tenure? Is it something that needs to be renewed or reviewed? And then, are we going to be given a list of who is bonded for each building? Or can we be given?
It's a personnel issue, it's a personnel, so I would have to check with council to see. It is a yearly fee that's paid, it's through Maya.
Anything else? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero zero.
Okay.
Now, article for special town meeting.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that the committee was informed that this article will go on special town meeting, not the town meeting, but special, and the reason why it would go on special is, we would be able to access this money this year, and what we did is, we took money from closed projects and combined it to total forty thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. What this will do will be help to defray cost of HVAC and building repairs, and we specifically said high school and middle school. I went to, because of the timing of everything, I went to the selectmen, and they passed this, so right now I'm going to the finance committee next Wednesday to answer any questions they may have, but I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that this has been good for.
And, and I'm happy the selectmen, you know, did approve it, but I wish we did get some more notice on that, but, but I'm glad they did it. So, that's just information, we don't need to vote on anything, yeah. But any questions at all? Okay. Acceptance of gifts.
All right. One hundred and twenty-five dollars in canned goods from the First Congregational Church of Wareham to the staged backpack program, an electric guitar, bass guitar, mandolin, banjo, amplifiers and stands to the middle school music program from David Mason, school supplies, headphones, printer from Staples, and one used HP OfficeJet printer from the Onset Bay Association. I would ask the committee to please accept the gifts.
Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second it.
Okay, any further discussion? I'd just say that, thank you, as always, just one of my favorite parts of the, the agenda. With that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero zero. Just an interesting side note, so there's, you know, there's two letters here, the letterhead on one of them has Tracy as interim principal, and the other one mentions principal, it's weird.
Saving money.
Oh, there we go. Let's see, we did acceptance of gifts. Onto the report of the superintendent.
All right, there's several payrolls and bills that were not listed, so if you'll bear with me, I will read them. Payroll in the week ending February twenty-second in the amount of ninety-eight thousand three hundred thirty dollars and ninety-seven cents. The next are bill warrants, the week ending February thirteenth in the amount of one thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-three cents, the week ending February twentieth in the amount of sixty-four thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty cents, plus one thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. The week of February twenty-seventh, fifty-seven thousand, plus one hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred sixty dollars and twenty-eight cents, plus one thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and ten cents. March fifth, in the amount of twenty-six thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, plus two hundred and nineteen thousand four hundred seventy dollars and ninety-three cents. I would ask the committee to please approve all of the bill warrants and payroll that I read, plus what's listed on the newsletter.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero zero. Onto the monthly financial report. Well, I don't want to speak for you, but this is the next thing on the item.
That's what we're doing. So you have the monthly financial report, if you have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer them. What we're looking at are the negative accounts, and we're going to look at making some more journal entries to balance. So if you have questions, please let me know.
Yeah, I don't have any questions at this time, but I probably will, we're gonna meet as a budget advisory on March second at five o'clock, and I'll probably, you know, go over it then, but anyone else, if you'd like to ask questions?
I would just say, I had a question, I did ask it already, but I'll ask it again, about the Deccus heat in utilities, it just looked like the account, you know, had, was down pretty low, but Dr. Shaverhood explained that the money's been encumbered through the year. That was just the concern that I had when I read it.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Just, just so I understand, that the amounts that are negative now are by the, are being, in the, in the process of being adjusted, is that what you were saying?
We're looking, we're going through and looking at, where do we have money that we can ask for a journal entry to be made? So we will be bringing back those amounts, if they're over five thousand dollars and they change major accounts, the school committee needs to vote. If they're between the same account and under five thousand, I can have the journal entries made, but then you will be given a list of all changes.
So this will be to just transfer things from one line item to others to cover, offset, whatever, might have surplus as opposed to what's negative, just so I, okay?
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Ms. Bakayaki, onto the report of the school committee, superintendent evaluation subcommittee, did you have something you wanted to mention?
Um, no, I think we're, if it's okay, we'll wait until the next meeting.
Sure.
So then we'll have something to distribute to the committee.
All right, so we're not gonna table, but it's, it's just, you know, whenever you can.
Yes, yes.
All right. And with that, any other business? Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second it.
Second, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? We are adjourned, four zero zero.